I'd like to bring this meeting of the school committee to order and welcome everybody in attendance and welcome our viewers on television and let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
President, good flag, United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there anybody attending tonight's meeting who would like to speak to the school committee who isn't already on the agenda? The next item on our agenda is all business. Are there any updates from committee members on all business or central office on all business? Okay, new business, committee members, new business.
Nothing else.
Okay. Superintendent's report, Dr. Maestis.
Yes, good evening, everyone. I'd like to present some items for the superintendent's report tonight. In the superintendent's report section of the agenda tonight, there are a couple of documents here that I've noticed you probably had a chance to look at or I hope you had a chance to look at. One of them is we did receive a letter from the Plymouth Special Education Parent Advisory Council and they submitted a letter to the school committee so that they can look at how the CPAC can become more involved and how the school committee can be part of that process. And this is relative to the conversation that Ms. Badger had with the school committee probably two meetings back. One of the things that we did have a chance to do is we looked at the Department of Education's guidelines for organizations such as the CPAC and there are some very strict guidelines on how we would actually support that. And one of the things that I might reference is Policy 2.14, which really does give the advisory committees to the school committee. So I think one of the things that I would suggest doing to be able to take a look at the request to become more involved is perhaps to overlay the advisory committees to the school committee policy along with the guidance from the Department of Education to make sure that we're actually following the letter of the spirit of the guidance from the Department of Education. So I would suggest that we do that and in September when the school starts up and CPAC starts forming meetings, they can actually have this guidance to help them with their organization.
Which is the same thing we did for the school councils. You're suggesting the same procedure?
Yes, the same procedure, absolutely.
Makes sense.
The next item is the Plymouth Food Service. I remember over the last retreat, we discussed the food service possibility of our food service providing contract service for the Plymouth Charter School, Rising Tide. Our food service director, Patrick Van Cot, submitted a bid for that offering and we actually won the bid. So the Plymouth Public Schools will be providing food services next year to Rising Tide Charter and they were awarded the contract for next year. So that's something that Mr. Van Cot felt that it would be adding another school to our offsite food delivery service, which we base that out of PCAS now and we'll just be adding another school. So that will help our school lunch program to be a little bit more sustainable because we will, as you know, and as the community may not know, our food service is 100% self-supporting and it'll help us to actually pay the bills for that program. Today was the last day of school and I think people, yes, I had the opportunity to go to, I didn't get very far today going around schools, but I got to South High and said hi to the staff there. I've been there a lot this year. But it was a really bittersweet day for a lot of staff to know that they were having their last staff lunch together and they were strictly removed from the building around 2:30 today because barriers were going up today to limit traffic, which really is the next part of my report. The traffic flow will start tomorrow to get around the building. So we did send this information around, parents have the information. When people arrive on the south campus, they will have to go on a counterclockwise rotation towards the football field and go behind the school. That's how people will access the new high school. But right now Plymouth South High School, old Plymouth South is virtually inaccessible only to the contractor and to some of our staff and the moving contractor that's going to be moving furniture and other items out of the school. So I would ask the community, they can access South Middle School the normal way, they don't have to go behind the school. They can actually take a left and go towards the middle school and continue that path. But Plymouth South High School is really at a place where people, there's nothing to see here. It's at a point where it belongs to the contractor and we will be working with our moving contractor in the next geez three weeks just to get this thing empty. Okay, so with that said, we've had a very, very busy school year and I want to thank all of our teachers, our parent professionals, our nurses are here tonight, our custodians, our school craftsmen, everyone, our office support staff for a wonderful school year. It's been a challenging year, but I think it's been a rewarding year. We've seen a lot of progress this year and I just want to thank everyone that's helped the school district to continue to make progress towards our goals and becoming a better environment for our stakeholders. Back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Committee members with response to our questions, Dr. Maestis. Ms. Hunt.
I probably should have mentioned this earlier. On the CPAC letter, I know page two of it for me was a blur, so I don't know if we can rescan it and send it to us.
Yeah, absolutely.
Did anybody else have a problem with that? The second page was just a blur.
I think that was the backside of the front page, maybe.
Is that what it was?
I'm coming through.
There's a page in there that I can't read, so.
Well.
Oh, okay, so I have three pages coming up, so that's.
Well, if you can read the third, that would be pretty good.
I can read the third page, so maybe there's really only two pages. Really?
No problem.
Oh, no, mine's a blur too. Then it goes below.
It's the back, yeah. Mr. Morgan, take that one.
Yeah, okay, got it.
Oh, yeah, it's coming through.
Okay, retirements, Ms. Frye.
Yes.
We have no retirements to report this evening.
Okay, thank you very much. Correspondence, Mr. Morgan?
There's no correspondence this evening.
Okay, great. Our first program update is from Dan Riley, Dr. Maestis.
Yes, tonight we have Mr. Dan Riley. He is the Director of Plymouth Educational Television. Dan has been with us now for seven years?
Eight.
Eight years. And when he came to us from a neighboring school district, we really had an idea of what we wanted to see happen in our district and he probably accomplished that in about six months and since then, Dan has been extremely creative and motivating his staff to really look at how do we communicate through educational television and just really trying to have a presence online and on our cable channels to really give an impression of what we do in the district. So tonight I turn it over to Dan to kind of give an update of where he's at as of 2017.
Thank you. We talk about ATV, there's no better day to present than the last day of school, so that's a good start. But I can't talk about ATV without talking about the staff of ATV. They're tireless workers, they stay weekends, they stay nights and the stuff that's being produced at this school is amazing and it's because of my staff and I just want to thank them personally for all the hard work they do. The one thing we will talk about on a regular basis in ATV, and this is the thing I'm most proud of with ATV, is that whenever we make a production or we start a program, the question that everyone on the team asks is how does this affect the children of Plymouth? It's never, you know, we gotta push out this video really quickly because people want to see it. It's how does it affect the student, who are the students we're highlighting, how is it affecting the education? And that's something that I love the most about our team is that they're always focused on the students first and I wanted to say that before I even started because it's the thing I'm most proud of. That's why our slogan, educate, communicate, entertain, education is first. Last year was the first time ever we had a video program at every single school in Plymouth. So all 12 schools have a video presence. We have 14 programs total and that's because the high school has a film and a news production team. So we're very happy with where we are at the school levels and the education programs. What we really focused on this year was the communication piece. But before we go there, the new exciting part of ATV this summer is of course the new South High School. And people keep asking me, will South High School have a TV studio? And the answer is of course, yes, it will and it will be extraordinary. This is a conversation that I always have with Patty, is whatever Plymouth North has, South should have, and we're very adamant of having the same equipment at both schools, having the same amount of microphones, the same amount of camera work. All that stuff is going to look exactly the same at North and at South. The only difference is the school's a little bit bigger and wider and so there's more ports throughout the school to do live broadcasts, so we're really excited. South has never created a live TV show before, so next year we're going to try for the first time to go live, not only to the school, but to the public as well. This year was the first time we ever did a live broadcast with students from North. They used to do it live throughout the school, but we actually did it to the homes of Plymouth this year and it was a huge success, so we're definitely going to carry that over to South High School. So a lot of our concentration this summer will be building that studio. But going back to the kids, which is the elementary level, we had a fantastic program this year. It started last year, it was like, let's see what we can build up and it just exploded at that level. We had 112 students our first year, this year we had 178. And of course, at the end of the year, we celebrated them at the Ellie Awards with the red carpet treatments and you'll see at the next picture how amazing that red carpet turned out to be with the line going all the way to the parking lot. And this wasn't because the doors were closed, they were open at this point, so it's just amazing how proud they are. They all want to get their picture taken on the red carpet, which slows down the process of getting in the door. The way they're so excited about it, I will never remove that red carpet, no way. So the Elleys was a huge success, the program run by Jen Mulvaney and Libby Hurley was a huge success and we hope to keep building on that program at the elementary level. So because it's been so popular, people have been asking about a summer camp. We started it last summer. Evan McNamara, my staff, he runs the entire summer camp. He does four weeks with grades five to eight. It's already full. We don't even have any more spaces left. That's how popular the summer camp has been. So that's an exciting thing that's continuing on into the summer. So we just keep going. Finally, the productions, as you can see, the last two years, we've increased. And last year was a lot due to the increase in staff. This year, what I'm most proud of, is it was the biggest ratio of student-related created content versus the staff-related content. So more and more students are creating videos than ever before in our district and that 516 was mostly made up of student productions. Because we think that we do a good job of making videos, but if a student is telling the story, it takes on a whole new level because they're the ones in the schools and they're talking about what their classmates are doing and what their teachers are doing and it just has so much more meaning to the public. So we're really proud about the student level of video that's coming up in our schools. And finally, plays online this year is the most we've ever had. This is actually people pressing play on their videos and we have 74,000 just this year alone on those videos that we created. So that is a big impact on the community, what they're seeing going on in our schools and, you know, a couple of years ago, we didn't have anything that was showing what was going on. So having 74 eyes watching videos happening in the schools is a pretty powerful way to tell what's going on. And finally, and I promised myself, because the first time I ever did one of these, I went on for 46 minutes and people started calling me 46 for a couple of years, so I tried to do it at under five today, but this is the one I really want to focus on this year because I just think the social media aspect of the Plymouth Public Schools has just grown leaps and bounds. And that's due to Emily Goonan, like the amount of talent she has in telling what's going on in the schools is extraordinary. I think sometimes we take for granted just seeing social media that it's going to be there, but I think if you went to other towns and saw what their schools were sending out, maybe like a couple tweets a day, you'd realize how many things are being told about the school to the community. And I think it's not just sending out a tweet, it's not just sending out a video or putting something on Facebook, it's how you do it. And I think that's what she does a really good job of, is she analyzes what's the best way to do it. So for instance, if there's some stats about testing, she won't just throw the testing stats out there, she'll make a graph that really tells the story of how it works. And these are skills that she picked up at conferences and I think she's done a really good job of taking a video, taking a stat, taking a graphic and really telling the story of what's going on in the schools. And if you ever see the numbers of the people that are following the school system on these Facebooks and Twitter, it's amazing. And it's a great way that the school committee is telling the community what's going on in the schools and I think it's just a powerful thing and I think Emily's doing a fantastic job at that. So with that, I think I did pretty good with quickness, but I know there's probably questions because I went so fast, so if you have any questions, feel free to just send them my way.
Mr. Begley.
Great presentation, but when are we going to switch over to, you're going to film us, the school committee, as we go through the various schools and stuff? We talked about it.
That's a good question. We used to do the on-the-road school committees. This year, what we want to do is right away, starting next year, is have you show up at the school during the school hours. Now, I know it's very important to you that you don't disrupt the day, but we wanted the school committee to actually see what was going on during the school day, because a lot of times when you guys go to the on-the-road shows, by the time you get there, there's nobody in the school.
Right.
So we want you to see them in action. So what we're going to do is we're going to pair with the ATV Kids Program and they have their iPads and their cameras and they're going to follow you around the school so you can see what's going on in the gym class and in the cafeteria and how they eat lunch and you'll get a firsthand knowledge of those schools. And we're going to follow you, take all the information and all the videos back and put together like a little live production that we can show to the town of what the school is doing and what you saw there. So it's going to be a whole new production that we've never done before. It's similar to the SuperTeach that Gary does with it. We just follow him with cameras and see what happens.
Yeah, we did it one time, remember with the cafeteria?
Yes.
When we had the switching of the way we were serving lunches.
Yeah, we did it in.
Yeah, right here.
PCAS food service.
It worked really nice the way you guys did it, I thought, so.
And we're going to have the little elementary kids giving you the tours, so you're going to see how proud they are of their school and I think that'll come through on the video.
Perfect.
Other questions, comments? Thank you, Mr. Riley.
Thank you.
Just one last thing I want to highlight. Emily Goonan's here and I just want to show something that she put together for the district, for our families. And if you look up on the screen, we released on Friday the Plymouth Public Schools Summer Learning Guide and it's a, I don't know how many pages it, Emily, 12?
It's about 18.
18 pages. But it's an electronic news profile that goes to all our stakeholders in the community and just highlights all the different programs that we have this summer. So Emily, if you wouldn't mind talking about it for a little bit?
Yeah, so what we wanted to do is really showcase what the district offers in the summer, including camps. Plymouth Family Network offers some great programs as well as some programs throughout the town. I worked with Plymouth Public Library to include some of their events in this guide and what this guide really does is it also includes academic. We want to make sure that our students have a great summer and parents have a wonderful summer and of course, they are not in school for a long period of time throughout these months, so it's important that they know that it's really vital for them to still keep testing their brain and learning different things throughout the summer. So this guide offers resources on how to avoid that summer slide. It offers tips, it includes the math packets and reading lists for parents to easily click on the link and get all of that information in one guide. And then science technology, it has some awesome apps, some information on the solar eclipse that's happening this summer and some really great resources just to keep students academically active this summer.
What a great idea, great idea.
Thank you.
I just have to, Emily, as a former principal, the summer work being on there is the greatest gift you have given to the buildings all year because you get calls all summer and then where people are on vacation, we don't know where to find it and it's unbelievable. Great job, the whole thing.
Thank you, thank you. And we're going to share this on social media throughout the summer as well, so parents will keep seeing this on Facebook and Twitter and all over our website as well.
Ms. Hunt.
Can we put this school supply list in there too?
We actually plan on doing a back-to-school one in August and that'll include everything you need to know.
We need that earlier though, we need to put that list out earlier than August.
It's coming.
ASAP.
It's coming.
Good job.
Very good. Thank you.
Good.
Dr. Maestis.
Yes, and now we have our next program update, which is our nurses' office and we have Carolyn Rains is here today to present on our student health services. And Carolyn has been on the job for a year and she's done a fantastic job and she actually brought some posters to share with us this evening. Also, we have three of our nurse leaders that are here tonight to add support for our program, so with that said, I'll turn it over to Carolyn.
And while Carolyn is coming to table, I want committee to note that Carolyn is president of the Massachusetts School Nurses Association.
I am, until June 30th, fortunately. And that stint will be over, fortunately. But it's been a great experience in terms of like having some statewide coverage for Plymouth at some of the legislative meetings that I've had the opportunity to attend, so that's been certainly beneficial and having a chance to be up front and center with some of the legislation that's coming down the pike and bills that are pending right now that impact schools and school nurse practice, some which are great and some not so great, so, but thank you.
For the first slide, not this slide, you can go ahead.
You have the clicker right there.
Put the fog in front of you.
Okay, this? Oh, I can do it myself. Thank you, I was, very good. Okay, so I think the goals of school health services, I mean, obviously, I think most of you know it, to advance the well-being and academic success of our students and the contributions that school nurses make to that. I think one of the big pieces is the critical link between health and the educational communities, interdisciplinary collaboration that goes on that's really critical to the success of health services. But just to talk a little bit about school nurses, certainly they provide direct care to our students, the daily health encounters that happen every day. Approximately 85% of our students access health services at some point during the school year, aside from the screenings that are done, which obviously all of our students are screened, so it's certainly noteworthy to make note of that. So screening conduction, referrals, healthy school environment, a lot that the nurses are doing in terms of frontline disease surveillance and immunization updates, making sure everybody's compliant, you know, talking about vaccine-preventable disease, flu vaccines and the importance of that during the school year, hand washing. And I'll talk a little bit more about all of this later. But again, the school nurses are really a direct link between the community, the providers and the school personnel and families, so it makes a really big difference in terms of caring for the kids. And a few more things I wanted to mention about Plymouth, the school nurses are also student mentors. They mentor students at Quincy College, Cape Cod Community College and the tech program at North. They're all certified basic life support instructors, which is really important, I think, in keeping our schools safe. They coordinate health fairs at four of the elementary schools, which require a lot of community collaboration, so to educate our families and our students on health issues. They collaborate in the backpack program, they participate in the wellness committee, which I'm really not going to talk about the wellness committee tonight, but just talk about sort of bringing the wellness committee back to the district. I think it was on a little bit of a hiatus, formerly the School Health Advisory Council, and looking at issues related to wellness in the district. And the nurses, again, also facilitate an oral health program. And some of our data wasn't ready when I had to submit the presentation, so I do want to mention, one of the big pieces the school nurses contribute to is oral health. And oral health is one of the conditions that contributes, actually one of the condition that contributes to the highest level of absenteeism in students, so it's really important to overall health and well-being. The school nurses work with the Department of Public Health and implement the fluoride milderance program in grades two and three. And actually, this year, 50% of our second and third graders participated, so a total of 538 students participated in the fluoride milderance program, which is really a great number. And the nurses also facilitate the polished dental program, which comes in and provides dental salience to students in grades K through eight, dental health assessment, and 521 of our students from kindergarten through grade eight participated in that. So again, just the whole child framework, looking at school health and looking at the importance of interdisciplinary collaboration with the school nurses and the school team, not forgetting the community at large and basically working to bridge a community, a culture of health in our schools. So our numbers changed a little bit, I didn't have the June numbers, so actually, our numbers with the June data added, we had 81,677 health encounters this year in the district. And that just is daily health encounters, that doesn't include screenings or other medication administrations. So for the month of June, 4,756 students accessed the health office. Overall, our return to class rate over the year is 90%, but I would say in June, the return to class rate actually was 94.4%. And of course, the school nurses were critical in getting those kids back to class and not being dismissed, although maybe the weather may have helped a little bit too for that. Okay, so I want to just move forward a little bit, but those numbers are pretty staggering, actually. So as far as what some of the types of health encounters that the nurses participate in with the students, obviously the routine office visits, medication administration, health screenings, special medical conditions and skilled nursing care and emergency care. And this year, for 911 calls, there were 27 nursing-generated 911 calls in the Plymouth Public Schools. That doesn't include behavioral health calls that were made outside the nurse's office. So again, those are for injuries, illnesses and behavioral health issues. So I just want to do a little bit of thank you to all of the nurses in the district. So again, I want to thank Emily Goonan for helping me with all of the photographs. So Ann Powers, who is here tonight and who has been an amazing support and mentor to me through this last year, I can't say enough about Ann, including the fact that for the last six years or seven years that I've known her, she was always so calm and collected and I just thought this job was going to be just so easy. Not necessarily the case, but Ann has been amazing and I really appreciate all of the help and having been a high school nurse, I can certainly appreciate the year that she has had, working with Kim Cameron at Plymouth South High in two separate offices. So one of the best pieces of the new high school is that they're going to be working together. And one of the big highlights, I would say, with the high school programs, and I'll shift over here to Plymouth North with Amory Schroeder, who is, who this year was the one full-time nurse she worked with, Mara Gallagher and Judy Roy, who were both part-time this year. And Amory just received her National School Nurse Certification Exam, so I do want to recognize that, which is a great accomplishment. And so one of the big pieces with the high schools this year is the implementation of ESPERT. And so most of you may be aware that ESPERT was the result of a statewide mandate as a result of the opioid law. And it's an acronym for Screening, Brief Intervention and Referral to Treatment. And it's a public health prevention model that is actually evidence-based in the adult population. It's been used extensively in adults. Massachusetts is a model program for ESPERT in terms of implementing it in the school district. And Plymouth decided before I came on board that they would start with grade nine. And so that this past year, grade nine had their screenings and next year, we will also be including grade seven as well. And I think one of the big pieces I have to attribute to the success of all of the nurses at the high school, the work together collaborating to make this a transparent process. We sent a letter out in August to all families explaining what ESPERT was, talked about the confidentiality piece and all that was involved in the screening. And then we also offered a parent informational evening and the nurses collaborated with their health education teachers to go into the classrooms prior to the screenings so that they could explain everything to the children in terms of what to expect, because some of the kids, I think, had been hearing, oh, they were going to be drug tested and they were just concerned as to what this screening was all about. I think the Speaker of the House also thought that it was going to be a drug test, but so again, you know, I think the kids went into this, no, and parents obviously too, we gave, it was sort of an opt, it was an opt-out. Students also had the option of opting out and we had very few students district-wide whose parents opted them out of this test. There was a lot of collaboration with school staff, including working with the counseling staff and as I mentioned before, the health education teachers that were very supportive. And the nurses gave the kids lots of resources and had a really, a real clear plan in place in terms of the confidentiality piece in the health office during the screenings. We had subs in place to cover the office while the nurses did the screenings. And I think, you know, looking back, we evaluated the process and it was seamless, actually. And I just want to give all of them a lot of credit. It didn't go that way in all districts, but I think it was definitely a great success. It didn't go that way in all districts, but I think it was definitely a great success. And if anybody has any questions about ESPERT, if you want to, this might be a time to ask.
No.
No?
No questions, thank you.
So at PCIS, we have Laura Wilson and Courtney Rudinoff, and they worked together very closely this year to do a major EpiPen training, life-threatening allergy training with their middle school students who had that diagnosis. And they did a great job looking to help their middle school students become more self-sufficient and autonomous and caring for themselves, and eventually being able to obviously self-administer in an emergency if they ever needed to. So they, that worked out really well together. Of course, next is Joanne DiNatolos, and she's, Joanne is unfortunately retiring from the Plymouth Public Schools. She has been, I believe, the nurse at Plymouth South Middle School for 18 years. She has been a mentor to many, many new school nurses in her time working with the district. Anne has spoken so highly of her over the years. I've known her well through the Mass School Nurse Organization. She was a pivotal support in the utilization of health software for the district, and she's going to be certainly very, very missed. Okay, so Marissa Shore is the school nurse at West Elementary. Marissa was recently featured in the Voyager Express for the national program Kindness Rocks Program, and to spread inspiration and encourage kindness, spreading positivity at West. Marissa is an amazing nurse. She does an enormous amount of health education in the classroom and in her health office with students, hand washing, oral health, nutrition, hygiene, seasonal safety, and she's just great. She also does a school newsletter. So Ginny Curcio, and I looked at her title as District-wide Substitute Nurse, and I tell her all the time that that is really, does not really quite capture what Ginny does for us. She's truly amazing in all of her outside-the-box work that she does for school health, school health services. She produces our quarterly health headlines, which is sent out to families. She actually designed, single-handedly, our district school nurse manual. She formats all of our health services documents on our nurse drive. She updates all of our manuals every year and contact lists. She helps me out tremendously in terms of helping me with meeting minutes for nurses in wellness committee meetings. She provides coverage at Unified Track and Field and in the Best Buddies Program for students with special medical concerns. So Ginny's truly, her value is just cannot be measured. She also coordinates the flu vaccine program that we have for our students, and, which involves a lot of data entry and billing, as well as actually administering the program in clinics. So she's, I really have to thank her for that. And she's currently working on a how-to manual to transfer her responsibilities to her replacement someday, but I keep telling her that's not going to ever happen. And I just want to tail off Ginny. Laura Morgan is the school nurse at South Elementary School, and I just wanted to acknowledge her dedication. She works very closely with a lot of her community supports, including the Y program. She completed a big attendance project this year, looking at students with chronic absenteeism in her building from K through four, working on educating families on the importance of being in school. And I know that the studies and statistics point to first graders who are chronically absent as having a higher dropout rate. So that's one of the premises that we started this project with the Department of Public Health several years back. So anyway, and also too, Laura just completed a very successful health fair at her school last week. Susan Murphy is, oh, I think I have to go back. Susan Murphy is the school nurse at Nathaniel Morton. She's one of the senior nurses in the district, and she's taken on many outside-the-box activities herself with her students and families and staff. Her advocacy and support for her school community has gone in multiple directions. She does a lot in terms of going into the classrooms and educating students. One of her big hot topics, aside from oral health, is life-threatening allergies. She has all kinds of lessons, reads the kids' stories, provides resources to families and staff, has a lunch bunch, and, you know, again, all to address the issue of life-threatening allergies. I also know she was one of the people who accompanied the superintendent on his dream ride a few years ago, and so that was one of her claim to fame. She talks about that all the time. And like the other nurses, she had a health fair this year, which was very successful, which required a lot of the community collaboration. And she also mentors students in the Allied Health Program and also for Cape Cod Community College as well. And she's currently in a masses and nursing program, so she's very, definitely very busy. So next is Luanne Neams, the Mandamit Elementary School nurse. She, her previous role as a clinician, as a pediatric nurse practitioner, certainly lends her with a vast amount of clinical skills to handle her young students with acute illnesses and chronic diseases. But she has certainly a great understanding of growth and development of her young, school-aged children. She also did a chronic absenteeism study during the school year, working with children who are chronically absent in their families, and has done extensive classroom education on oral health, hand-washing, injury prevention, and is also a mentor to student nurses. There's a lot of nurses, sorry, I know I keep going. Almost done. Michelle Mizola is the Indianbrook nurse, Indianbrook Elementary Nurse, and she also, again, did a major CQI project on chronic absenteeism and saw those children, those children coming to school more and more frequently as the year went on. Again, health education is really important for her, and Michelle had also the role of CPR coordinator for the district, which we did quite a number of classes this year. We educated all of the JUDCO drivers, which was certainly a major task. Central office staff and the superintendent was also present at that class. And so again, it's been a great opportunity, and the coaching staff, we did one season of coaches. So Holly Malone is the nurse at Hedge, or was the nurse at Hedge this year, filling in for Kristin Isola. Kristin went out on maternity leave in January, and Holly came in and took over and did a really, a really great job with the kids. One of her additional things that she had offered is part of the enrichment program, Holly plays the harp. And looking at music is definitely, the healing power of music and therapy. She said that not too many kids were, you know, coming to listen, but a lot of the staff were at least, so she said it was definitely positive experience. Okay, so Jen Minio, who is also another senior nurse in the district. Jen is the nurse at Federal Furnace. She is going to be going over to Plymouth South Middle School, taking over Joanne DiNatolos' role there. And Jen has done an amazing job in terms of her knowledge of trauma-sensitive schools. She has worked as an integral part of her team. I've seen her in action in her building. She collaborates very closely with staff, supporting the whole child. She does much to proactively support a safe and supportive environment in her school, understanding how important that is for health and learning. She's also very involved in the Algonquin Heights community. Jen is also, she recognizes the importance of really knowing her student population. She actually physically goes to there, goes there and does a lot of health education with parents and students, and does like on various topics after school, like health, wellness, and hygiene. She's also been a student mentor in the Allied Health Program at North, and she mentors student nurses at FOCs as well, and has been to many wellness committee meetings. Grace Pinto, Cold Spring Elementary Nurse. One of the, one of the things that I want to highlight with Grace is that she recently revamped the district health history form, which gives families the opportunity to add additional information onto their child's health history relative to family history of substance use, mental health issues, any other, any challenges related to social issues that impact the family. So that, a lot of very important information has come back. Grace also recently presented at a statewide nurse leader meeting on her community collaboration and care coordination with her students, and basically all around cultural competence. She worked with Harbor Health and the district translator, Mari Costa, in terms of working with her Brazilian students, you know, Portuguese-speaking students. They actually recently came to a health fair, and the nurse did a lot of health education with the Portuguese, the Portuguese-speaking students. So it was really a success, and definitely appreciate Grace's efforts. Jean Hight, the Plymouth Element, Plymouth Early Childhood Center nurse, is just completing her fifth year in the preschool program. Jean does a lot of work with families and puts together a lot of individualized healthcare plans, and, you know, definitely realizes the unique value of working with her families at the elementary, at the preschool level. So this is just a picture of our legislative visit. We invited Representative Moratori and Representative Coulter to come. Unfortunately, the superintendent and Chris Campbell were able to come as well, as well as Mrs. Burgess and Kim Hunt. And so we, for the purpose of that was to highlight the work of the school nurses in the district, certainly, and open up the conversation regarding the critical issues impacting school health today, as well as the number of legislative bills that impact the school health office. So I think that was a success. So the special top behavior, the top special healthcare needs, just going down the list, I think obviously asthma usually reigns at the top among a lot of these other issues, all which, of course, require the school nurse involvement. Nursing assessments and interventions, one of the things I just want to mention here is that, for example, with blood glucose testing and carbohydrate and pump calculations, before in the past, when a student was just recently diagnosed with diabetes, they would be in the hospital for days. And now, with a diabetic, diabetes diagnosis, the kids are right back in school. So I think it's really important to speak to the value of having the nurse in the building and being able to monitor these students. Some of them are very young, it's kindergarten and first grade, so all of these, you know, things that the nurses do every day are very important. Health office medications, a variety. I think one of the biggest pieces that we've seen in terms of an increase are the psychotropic medications that are administered daily to our students. And then the other piece I also want to add is that naloxone or Narcan was obviously an emergency medication that we had added this school year to our list of emergency medications. So student behavioral health, approximately 1,271 of our students have a diagnosed behavioral health condition. And one of the things that's noted by the CDC in terms of data is that only 20% of students are actually children are diagnosed with a behavioral health disorder and are treated. So there are so many kids that go sort of under the radar and that we miss. So I think it's really important that we, you know, make note of that and just, again, the nurses see all these kids in the office every day. And again, you know, you look at some of the issues with behavioral health and these diagnoses, and so many of the kids, you know, even just kids, a little stress and anxiety can certainly, you know, impact their health and learning during the school day. So some of the behavioral health interventions that the nurses do, this is like basically on our monthly report that we turn into the state, it's broken down into these different interventions. Just wanted to take, be able to take a look at it. So next, health insurance is certainly a big one. The nurses oversee and monitor what types of insurances our students have. And I think this slide sort of does point to the fact that we do identify still students with no insurance, or students that we don't know what their insurance is. So we still have a lot of work to do, making sure that students are linked to providers and to insurance. One of the other pieces I think here is important is the free, I'm not sure if any of you are familiar with the free care rule, but looking at the challenges that with education dollars supporting school health services, the National Center for Medicaid and Medicare in 2014 sent letters to all states telling them that the free care rule did not apply to schools and the schools would, should be able to bill for certain types of services, like screenings. So every state was put to the task of amending their state plan. Massachusetts did that in September, and they're just waiting approval and feedback. So hopefully, coming up this year, schools may be able to expand their Medicaid billing services to beyond just students with IEPs. So maybe students with 504s, maybe we can stop billing for some screenings as well, which would be beneficial. So the BMI screenings, looking at, breaking them, breaking it down to male students, we screen, do BMI screenings in grades one, four, seven, and 10. And I think the biggest piece here is, you know, certainly, the school nurses use their discretion in terms of parent notification, but I think that the overall overarching all noteworthy piece is that whether it's girls or boys, the majority of our students are of healthy weight. I think that with BMI screenings, you have to look at, you know, body mass index is not always indicative and true to if a student is really obese or overweight or not. Looking at some, you know, high school 10, grade 10 football player may show is overweight or obese when he's really not. It doesn't really show true fat content, fat mass, but again, I think positively, I think our district, an amazing number of students are of healthy weight. So district-wide concussion data, we did add one more to the list last week, so we actually have had a total of 138 concussions. And again, these numbers have vacillated back and forth since the law took effect in 2010. But again, you know, concussions certainly do have a neurocognitive impact, so they do impact kids in the classroom. So here's my brain.
A concussion is a type of traumatic brain injury.
This is just 30 seconds.
Or TBI, caused by a bump, blow, or jolt to the head.
You have the brain is going back and forth in the skull. And so even though someone may hit the back of their head, the front of the brain also can still be injured. If somebody is blindsided, like in this case, or hit from the side, the brain can shift, the force of the brain goes back and forth inside the skull. That's called a counter coup injury. Sometimes it's actually a twisting of the brain. And certainly, that particular injury is a little bit more serious, but just getting a look at that, I just, I just thought maybe I could show you guys that for, just a visual. So one of the things I will have to say with the school, and if you guys want to look at the infographic, I have two infographics. One of them is on concussion awareness in schools, like looking at two hot topics in health services, concussions being one of them. Just looking at the number of total concussions across the district this year, looking at the fact that we do have impact testing for our athletes. And again, looking at the fact and how the school nurses manage their concussion management program in terms of educating the parents, the students, the teachers, and the coaches, working with the providers and the families to make sure that the students are safe and ready to learn. The very bottom section of the infographic shows the brain, and again, basically, the symptoms that the child feels or the impact that it will have on the classroom is where in the pot of the brain that was actually injured. So a blow to the back of the head may impact vision and dizziness level, whereas a headache or issues with reading could occur if there's an injury in the frontal lobe. So based on where the pot of the brain is injured, you'll see the symptoms. So again, it's sort of a good little piece to show the teachers so they have a little bit of an understanding of the neurocognitive part. The second issue in schools, obviously, is life-threatening allergies. In this district, we have 316 of our students have life-threatening allergies. The majority of those allergies are to food, and certainly a few to bee and wasp stings. And I think we have to remember that ate foods account for all food allergic reactions. Certainly nuts, tree nuts, peanuts are, again, one of the major causes, and we do a lot in the district to educate families, looking at certainly the policies that we have, having safety plans, the communication and collaboration with families and teachers and substitute teachers, and basically basing everything on evidence-based practice, making sure the student is safe and healthy to learn. Okay, so data collection, obviously, is really important for the school nurse in terms of her healthcare documentation, but also, you know, for reasons for staffing levels, tracking student behaviors, students at risk, and just having a basic understanding of overall healthcare needs. Some of the things that the nurses are involved in, healthcare plans, 504s, emergency action plans, working with coaches is another big piece with the nurses at the middle school and high school level, and certainly home visits as needed in health education. Health Services has a new Facebook page as well, and if any of you are interested in looking at that, we like to frequently post all different types of health-related issues and concerns for families. And so I just, again, in closing, I would really, really like to thank the superintendent for all of his support in, for Health Services, and certainly can't appreciate that enough. Chris Campbell for all of his support as well. I didn't leave you one on purpose, Patty, but appreciate it too.
It's okay.
And last but not least, I just, this was, this was kind of funny. We had, like, looking at the first school nurse was Lena Rogers in 1902. Doctors were sent into schools in the late 1800s, and they ended up with basically putting students who were sick out of school. So they had a huge delinquency problem, and so they decided to try with a school nurse in 1902. And by 1914, there were 400 school nurses in New York City schools. Again, disease surveillance being one of the major pieces of their work, and that still remains today. There's still not as much technology in a nurse's office as there is in a hospital, but certainly with a lot of students with major medical concerns, there, we certainly do utilize a lot of technology, more than we have in the past. That is it. Anybody have any questions?
Very, very excellent report. I think we really enjoyed hearing about each one of the school nurses. That was a great addition to the report. Thank you so much. Now, committee members with questions, comments, needs? Mr. Begley.
A great presentation. I like that you touched on each one of the nurses, so we get a chance to see them and what they're working on, and that was very well done. On the posters you gave us, I just had one question on, it says ate foods account for 90% of the food allergic reactions. It has wheat. It has wheat. Do we mean wheat or gluten?
It can be wheat or gluten.
Because I'm just concerned because gluten is much broader than just wheat.
It is, and I think that, you know, when you're looking at a life-threatening food allergy, gluten doesn't usually cause a life-threatening food allergy. It just, it can cause, it's like a sensitivity maybe is more than a life-threatening allergy. When we talk about life-threatening allergies, we're looking at foods that can potentially, you know, stop somebody's breathing and cause respiratory distress. But I think that I just, in putting that information there, I just really wanted to highlight that there are a number of foods. Sometimes people forget that sometimes fruits can certainly cause a life-threatening reaction, milk products.
Okay. I am assuming that NCS and its National Council of School Nurses?
Yes.
What is, what is CPNP?
Oh, that's a nurse practitioner.
Okay, wait, okay.
Pediatric Nurse Practitioner.
Pediatric.
Certified Pediatric Nurse Practitioner.
And the programs vary, but usually you have your master's in school nursing and you have to sit for a statewide licensing exam as well. So it's an, it's an expanded role. And there are, you know, certainly school nurses, many school nurses that have that.
Two nurses that have that.
We have two, we have two in the district.
Two in the district, yeah, I think that's fantastic.
We have one here tonight.
Yes, that's how she knew what it stands for. Okay, that was a great report. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything on school fundraisers that meets, that needs to be discussed here this evening? Committee members with reports. Ms. Hunt.
I just have one quick thing. As a member of the Plymouth Antaquarium Society, I was asked to join their education committee. And I had a meeting this morning with some of the members as well as some members from the Indivisible Plymouth Group. And Mr. Begley, you would really appreciate this because the focus and the push is going to be on civics and voter registration, highlighting Plymouth's history as to, you know, how it was not that long ago that there were several groups of people that weren't allowed to vote, getting more people involved, more people in Plymouth to register to vote. Also, they're really interested in, apparently they have worked with Dr. Bobini in the past and they're hoping to work with her successor about maybe forming some internships. We talked about the senior projects, mentors, internships actually at the Hedge House that are, you know, students that are really interested in, in history. And they're actually talking about the possibility of forming a junior society with students. So I think this was our first real discussion about it, but I think it's really exciting and it's kind of an out of box, out of the box way to try and get some more of this involvement with the schools. And one of the things that they want to do is reach out to a lot of the, I mean, we've got so much history in Plymouth, and they're like, you know, Plymouth is just so much more than a rock. And reach out to the other groups such as the Plantation and the Mayflower Society and all the other groups that can pull some of this history and get our students more involved.
Thank you. Mr. Morgan.
I was just going to say, last Monday I attended a concert from the Plymouth International Choir. And Marge was there as well as a little follow-up to their presentation to the school committee. And they played a few more songs during that concert and they did such a great job. And they actually, I believe they leave the end of this week.
Thursday.
Yeah, so, safe travels to them and look forward to hearing a report from them when they get back.
You will.
Mr. Begley.
I just wanted to say that we all went on the tour the other day of Plymouth South High School, and I just wanted to commend everybody on the results of the building is beyond expectations. It's really well done, and I just wanted to say Ted Gentry and Associates. I know there was a lot of people involved, but Ted Gentry and Associates I think deserve an extra special call-out and especially Tom Finnegan. Because both of these projects, he personally shepherd both of these projects to their conclusions and it's great, just a great accomplishment.
Just to follow with that, yeah, thank you, Dr. Sorensen. Just to follow up with that, I do have a mental list of names that we will highlight during the ribbon cutting of, I mean, there's a lot of people, there are a lot, and many of them are on the, on the plaque. But I think there are some people that are not residents of the town of Plymouth that had a stake in getting that building where it is, Ted Gentry and Associates, Agostini Bacon Contractors, that there were just so many people invested in having a great product for the community of Plymouth. So we will make sure that we recognize them at the ribbon cutting, but you're absolutely right, the investment is there, the pride is there. I did have the opportunity to walk with George Agostini, who owns Agostini Bacon. And he said to me, Gary, I have built 200 schools in my career. And he says, this is the nicest school that we've ever built. So for a veteran contractor who's known throughout New England in building quality schools, for him to say that about a project here in Plymouth, it's, it means a lot. And, you know, it's, it's.
It also speaks to AI3, which are the architects, which I neglected to mention, but.
Absolutely.
The architects also for both buildings.
Yes.
The quality of their craftsmanship, I think makes Agostini and others happy. It's a design that's, they're happy to work with.
Absolutely.
I'm going to dovetail both those comments and remind everybody that we will be running tours of Plymouth South in August. They'll be published so you know when they are and take advantage of it because it's breathtaking. The detail, the state of the art, we have fiber optics in five places in the building, things that you cannot imagine are in public schools today. School isn't what it used to be, and this building really shows you that, you know. Did you have something else?
I didn't.
Mrs. Burgess.
No, I'm all set.
I have a couple of, Mr. Morgan.
Just a quick question, Dr. Maestis, can you remind us when the ribbon cutting's going to be for?
September 14th.
September 14th, and it'll be in the evening.
Okay.
And it's open to 680 people that will fit in the performing arts center. If we go beyond that, it'll be televised in the cafeteria.
On that TV, correct?
Well, we'll see what Dan can do.
Be up to Dan and Alan, but we'll see if we can get to them.
Okay, I just have a couple of things for the committee that I want to report. Well, I should add that I went to the PCIS awards ceremonies the other night, and I want to say that they're very well done, and you really have to thank the teachers who come extra and do the extra work to pull something like that together for a building as populated as this, and it's night after night, there were three nights in a row, I was able to make two of them. So that's really well done. Two things that the committee should be aware of, that we will be having our formerly referred to as the retreat is now referred to as the Saturday morning meeting. And it's, you know, you know, everybody knows what Saturday Night Live is, SNL. We have our SMM. Okay, so our SMM is going to be on, we're having a little trouble with the date, but I think we finally worked it out to the third Saturday in August, which is, what's the date of that? I have the 17th or the 19th?
Nineteenth.
It's the 19th, August the 19th. We'll stop that meeting at eight o'clock in the morning, and I hope to be done by 12, 12:30. Okay? So it's August the 19th on a Saturday morning for our SMM. And I put at the table tonight a list of, a description of all of our subcommittees because one of the items on our agenda for that, for that Saturday morning meeting is to look at this list of subcommittees and see if there are any that we can combine, if there are any that we can eliminate, or even add if that, if that became the case. So that's there for all of us to be prepared when we get to the meeting on Saturday in August. That's all that I have. Anything else from committee members under this item? Okay. PYDC? Any report? Dr. Maestis, Ms. Burgess?
Yes, I, we did have a PYDC meeting last week and we did meet on Friday at 8:00 AM over at Beth Israel, and we had a number of items on the agenda. We were really looking, overlooking at some of the things that we're planning for, for next year. We talked a little bit about the prevention piece that we're working on with Beth Israel, Deaconess Hospital. We had the opportunity to hear from Judy Vigna and our Healthy Plymouth initiatives that we're working on in, in the district. And for those of you that don't know Judy, she is a volunteer parent who is super involved, and she spearheaded Healthy Plymouth, which is a division of Plymouth Youth Development Collaborative. So it's, we heard a little bit about what they're doing. They're doing the Tomato Sauce Project, which I'm sure some of you may have heard, where our gardens are growing tomatoes and some of those tomatoes will then turn into tomato sauce. That will then be served in our cafeterias. So it's trying to get more and more kids involved and engaged. And Dr. Campbell, we had one thing at the top of the agenda and I'm drawing a blank. Oh, yes, how could I forget that? You presented it. I was well awake, I was, the data's staggering. So we, Dr. Campbell presented the Communities That Care Survey, and we do offer that survey to our students here in Plymouth. And he did run that, that data by our Plymouth Youth Development Collaborative Team to give them a preview of what we were dealing with, with some of these interesting data sets that we collected from student survey. That presentation will be provided to the school committee so that you can have an opportunity to see where we are with student behaviors and some information regarding where they are with that. So Dr. Campbell did a fantastic job presenting, and I, and I was listening.
Ms. Burgess.
Yes, I did attend that Healthy Plymouth, well, that they put on it by the hospital and showed that we were partners and all, and it was, it was pretty well attended. So it was good.
All right, the next item is the Building Committee report, and I can certainly give that and make it brief, talk a little bit about Newtown Hall. It's 88% complete. Unfortunately is behind schedule by approximately 20 weeks. It was originally planned for April, then it was moved to June, and now it's planned for completion in September, the middle of September, September 15th. The reason for that delay was two things that the, the general contractor shared with us the other night at the meeting was that they misjudged how long it would take to get the, the building so to speak, out of the ground. And then masonry during the winter was much slower than they had planned. So that's moving along. WB Mason is supposed to bring in the furniture August 21st. They believe that's going to, they're going to make that. And it's important to point out that there are penalties built into the contract, so the taxpayer of Plymouth will not have to pick up any of the delays that'll be taken, that'll be borne by the professionals involved. Okay, moving along to the Russell Street parking deck right next to the Newtown Hall. You know, the bids came in very, very high, so they're going back to the drawing board to find out why that happened, and that research is being done. Moving to Plymouth South High School, we just got the report. It's a beautiful building. The punch lists are going on as we speak. The general contractor has punched the list, the architect has punched lists, and they're being done. There's trees and shrubs will be planted. Well, they're in now, I'm assuming the seating and the grass will be coming in pretty soon, and then the final paving of the parking lots. There's 12 million dollars left in the budget, which I'm sure is going to be spoken for. The Symes House, that is going along well, it's within budget. There was one management company that proposed, and it was a good proposal, and the Board of, no, that's the next item. And there's a dedication on that one planned for July. It was originally planned for July 1st, but I think it's going to be moved. So a couple of other projects, the Salt Shed is, is going out to bid. The North Plymouth Fire Station, they're looking for an OPM, and they haven't had the closing yet. They're still working on the closing date for that. The Mount Pleasant School, there was one bid and that's been accepted by the Board of Selectmen. And that concludes the report on the Building Committee. Did I miss anything? Dr. Maestis, you were there.
I, no, you covered it very thoroughly.
All right. Personnel, Mrs. Frye.
Yes. This evening we have one certificated appointment, two classified appointments, one short-term maternity leave, and two resignations. And we're in the process of setting up all our contract signings and whatnot for the summer, so they're busy, busy, busy. So, and just one quick note to add, I just wanted to say thank you on behalf of Plymouth South too. I concur, Tom Finnegan is remarkable, and we had a, the final farewell for alumni at South. Michelle was there with the Alumni Association, and it was an unbelievable turnout. I was shocked at the turnout and the generations of kids, and when they'd walk out and see the, they'd go out by the calf and say, they said, where is the new school? They had no idea where it was. And they were just so proud of their legacy moving on. So they shared their thanks as well to all your support, listening to me wine over the years.
Dr. Maestis, some of them even apologized to, to her for the students that they were.
Mrs. Frye, I'm so sorry, you were really nice. I didn't think that at the time. But it was unbelievable, the kids that came back. Generate kids from Babo Day's day, it was remarkable. We had to kind of kick them out when we were, it was unbelievable. Michelle would tell you she had a lot of alumni sign up, so, but it was, there was a lot of fondness, which, you know, was really fantastic. But they're so proud and excited for the, a lot of people have children who are now going to be going there, so it's exciting, so.
Mr. Costin.
For the, first of all, this is the time of the year when we start to meet less frequently. And same time, our vendors still need to get paid. So we've put together a refrigerator-friendly document that can stick on your refrigerator. And if you can enter it into your calendars, we certainly appreciate you coming up to Central to sign the build schedules through the lockbox, so we try to give as much time as we can arrange of dates. We have three warrants that'll need to be signed during the year. During the summer, we don't have school committee meetings. And the first one unfortunately is over the 4th of July weekend, a long weekend, but we're going to definitely finish that by probably noon on Friday the 30th because some of us want to get over the bridge who live on Cape Cod. And we'll have it all weekend through July 5th. So if you can make time to come and sign that, that would be wonderful. And the next one's the 25th through the 20, 21st through the 25th of July, and again, the 18th through the 22nd. We'll leave it in the lock, in the lockbox for that period of time. If you can come sign, that would be, be great, so we can keep on our schedule with our vendors.
Okay. Dr. Maestis, make sure that Ms. Trissally.
Yes.
And Ms. Badger get this.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Costin. The warrant.
Whereas school committee members have been provided with a copy of the Cost Center Transfer and Transaction Summary Report and the warrant for review, I move that the Plymouth School Committee accept and approve the report and accounts payable warrant number S062217 dated June 22nd, 2017, in the amount of $1,451,354.51 as presented.
Mr. Begley has a second, and we'll take the vote electronically, please, for the And that's unanimous. Thank you. And now we're going to do minutes. We'll start with May the 1st. Committee members.
I can make a proposal to approve the minutes as submitted.
And that's been seconded by Ms. Hunt. Questions? I have one correction on, on May 1st, and it occurs on page eight, under Committee Member Reports. And the third paragraph in, when I was giving my report from the National Conference, National School Board Conference, the sentence reads, "Dr. Sorensen shared that a district with a version of the Backpack Program won last year and speculated about how many of our programs could reach that level." And there's an important sentence that was left out before Dr. Maestis speaks, and I'll give you that sentence, and I'll go slower than I did last time, I promise. Dr. Sorensen specifically mentioned our students' multi-grade contacts with Plymouth England and our K-12 prep for the 2020 celebration as a program worthy of submission. Then Dr. Maestis says that he believes it could reach that level. So that sentence is important right there. Okay, anything else on those minutes? And we'll take the vote, we'll vote on the minutes. It's up on your board. It's up on your board. And Waitnam Maje?
Yeah, I know, I'd be kind of, what's wrong?
Something's not right because we have, oh no, Waitnam Maje.
Okay, I got it. I went into them and that was the problem, or else.
Excellent, thank you. Executive session, May 1st.
I'll move it.
Ms. Burgess moves it.
I'll second it.
Mr. Begley seconds it. Question to those minutes. Seeing no hands, we'll take the vote. May 15th. Looking for a motion.
I'll move them.
Begley moves them, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Ms. Burgess is the second on a question. We'll take the vote. Minutes of May the 16th. Moved by Mr. Begley, thank you, seconded by Mr. Morgan. Question to May 16th. Again, we'll vote. Okay, May 15th with the Board of Selectmen, May 16th rather, with the Board of Selectmen.
I'll move it.
Mr. Begley moves it, Ms. Burgess is the second. Is there a question to those minutes? Okay, those, let's vote. And on that same evening, May 16th, executive session minutes. Mr. Begley moves it, thank you, Ms. Burgess is the second. And finally, the minutes of May the 22nd. Do we have a motion?
I think I took one out of order.
I'm sorry?
Trying to figure out where I took one out of order, because this is the 20.
Mine, just, I need to say something else.
Did we take, we're out of order on the votes? Let's see.
I think that Dr. Sorensen may simply have called one something different.
Okay. So the, the May 22nd?
Yep, that's where we are.
Okay, let me.
We have five votes already.
Okay, here we go. All right, we're ready to go, sir.
Okay, May 22nd, Mr. Begley.
I'll move it.
Thank you. Second? Mr. Morgan's the second?
Give me one second.
Questions, comments? All right, the vote, please.
He said that we already did. Wait a minute, what is this?
May 22nd we're doing, but the vote's up there, I don't know how that got there.
I think he said that.
But anyway, that's the way it would've went.
I did a clear and revote, because it was out of order.
It's all right.
But it, it looks good, though.
It's good.
The votes are the same.
Okay, so we're through the minutes?
Yes, we are.
All right, great, thank you. Okay, under the disposal of equipment, we have one disposed, two, one recycled and one donated. Dr. Maestis?
Yes, tonight we have a number of items being discarded from Madam at Elementary School. They have been reviewed by the principal, and they have been signed off by my office, and I recommend disposal.
Ms. Burgess moves that recommendation, seconded by Ms. Hunt. Okay, let's vote for those. Now the recycle, which is the next item?
Yes, we have a number of books at Cold Spring Elementary School, ranging from the first edition of Everyday Math Teacher's Manual all the way to old testing data material, and these are being recycled, and they will be donated to an organization to actually put these into schools that are in foreign countries that may need some level of assistance with, with books.
Okay, motion?
I'll move that.
Mr. Begley moves it, Ms. Burgess is the second. Question on those books? Okay, let's vote. And the, all right, Waitnam, all right, not quite there yet. Excellent, and now the other, other donations.
Yes, this is Plymouth South High School, we have 30 calculus textbooks that are outdated, and they will be donated to another school that is out of district, which is actually a student, a school that does not have textbooks at all, actually, so these will be donated.
Mr. Begley moves that. Is there, Mrs., Ms., Ms. Hunt is the second. Is there a question? Okay, we'll vote. That's unanimous. Do you have a motion for executive session? You can move it. So the last item on our agenda is executive session, Ms. Hunt?
I move to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to considering, this is what I read, right?
Contract negotiations.
Okay, contract negotiations.
That's the motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Morgan is the second, and now we need to take the roll call vote on that motion. Mr. Morgan, your vote?
Yes.
Ms. Hunt?
Yes.
Chair votes, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
And the, the committee unanimously has voted to go into executive session. At the, at the end of executive session, we will come out, and the only action that will take place at that moment will be to adjourn the meeting. Thank you.